We're ready when you are, Mayor.
Okay. Well, welcome, everybody pursuant to Executive Order Number 20-69 issued by the Office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March 20th, 2020. Municipalities may conduct meetings of their governing boards without having a quorum of its members present physically or at any specific location and utilizing communication media technologies such as telephonic or videoconferencing as provided by Section 120-54, Section 5b2 under the Florida statutes. The members appearing remotely for this meeting currently are Mayor Peter Simmons, Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson shortly, Councilman Jesse Purdon, Councilman Chris Corey, Councilwoman Laura Carr, Councilwoman Amy Corumba, and Councilman Fred Forbes. At this time, I'd like everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask Councilman Chris Corey to please lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which we serve, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Corey. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our City Manager, Arlene Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that update regarding our orders from Governor DeSantis as well. As we continue to monitor the different directives we receive from our White House Administration, the Governor's Office, and in coordination with Lee County in all efforts to take precautions and proactively protect the public health and safety of our community, our City Council and staff have decided that we would hold these meetings virtually in the best interest of our community and the public. The City of the New Springs is using Zoom to hold this April 8th, 2020 Virtual City Council Workshop. Additionally, the city has selected a virtual platform that requires the public, that does not require the public to purchase or download any additional software equipment to which, to watch this meeting and participate. Aside from the Zoom platform, and that the participants will be appearing remotely, the public will have no dissimilar difference in their ability to watch the meeting. City Council has asked that the public send their comments via email to citymeetings@citybesprings.org. And as of now, we have not received any comments via our email address today. If we do receive them afterwards, we will post them online for the party one to be able to pull up at near this city council agenda. At this time, I'd like to ask Communications Director Laura Taylor to execute the process of how we can move forward with this Zoom meeting.
Thank you, Arlene.
Okay, in order to ensure the public has the ability to view the meeting, the city's Communication Department will broadcast the meeting through all the usual channels and avenues that are provided when a city council meeting is held, fully in city council chambers at City Hall. The meeting can be viewed on Benita TV, on Comcast Channel 98, Summit Broadband Cable Channel 96, Hotwire Channel 398, CenturyLink Prism TV Channel 87. The city will also rebroadcast the workshop on cable as well as posted on the city website.
Great. Thank you, Laura. And I believe now our City Attorney Derek Rooney.
Hey, as has already been laid out for you, this meeting has been noted properly, and the agenda has been published. There is a process for submitting public comments, although because this is a workshop in which no formal action is taken, no public comments are publicly required. The virtual council meeting, under the terms that have been laid out, does comply with the requirements of Board of Sunshine Law, Chapter 286 and Chapter 120 with respect to virtual meetings. So at this time, we would be asking you to adopt a motion approving the proceedings set forth and the procedures laid out by your staff to move forward with this meeting.
Thank you, Derek.
So, a moment, second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to carry out the procedure as outlined by our team. Is there further discussion, counsel? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Fred, are you?
Aye.
There we go. I heard an "aye." Did you hear it, Deb?
Yes, I did.
Okay, dynamite. Thank you, Deb, very much. Arlene, I'll turn it over to you for the moment, and then now we can make some introductions of some guests that we have with us today as well.
Yes, Mayor, and that our last city council meeting had directed us in the end on one nation with some updates for the public answers our question.
You're sounding like a robot. Could you jump off and call right back? Sometimes when she does that, you pull the windows. It's something to do with the Zoom platform. If it does that to you, just leave your meeting and going back, and it usually corrects it.
Great. Thank you, Laura. I think I may have heard Arlene rejoin.
Hello, I'm back. Just so you can, I can go back over what we heard at our last city council.
Can we avoid that, please?
Oh. So, what we heard at our last city council meeting was some direction to provide additional materials to the public in holding once-a-week meetings in between our regular held city council meetings. In doing so, we have an opportunity here to hear today, to hear from both the Lee County Health Department as well as Lee Health, and we greatly appreciate them for joining us on the call. As you know, we had asked any additional questions that our council may have. We forwarded them to these representatives, and they're going to help us with an overview of what they're seeing today in our community and help to give us a better perspective for the community with any updates. At first, we'd like to ask the Florida Department of Health in Lee County, the Government Operations Consultant and Public Information Officer to join us.
Great. Thank you.
Hello.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council. My name is Tammy, and I am the Public Information Officer for the Florida Department of Health here in Lee County. And I can go over a quick overview of the four cases that the count is as of 10:00 a.m. this morning. The state of Florida has 15,456 cases. Fifteen thousand, three of those are Florida residents, 453 are non-Florida residents, 309, we have 309 deaths in the state of Florida. As far as for Lee County, specific numbers for Lee County as of 10:00 a.m. this morning, now that number is updated twice daily, once in the morning and once at evening. So as of 10:00 a.m. this morning, Fort Myers has a total of 167 cases. Cape Coral has 99. Lehigh Acres has 70. Benita Springs has 49. Estero has 20. North Fort Myers has 15. Sanibel has 6. Fort Myers Beach has 5. Elba has 4. There are 3 positive cases that are missing some of the demographic information, so those are just categorizes missing. And when those results come back or they're able to get more information, they do update the record. So that number is subject to change. Captiva has 1. And for Lee County, there's a total of 23 who are non-Florida residents who are tested positive here in the county. I appreciate the list of questions that was sent, and we did get a chance to answer some of those that did pertain to Department of Health, which are the ones that I'll be addressing. All right, one question from Councilman Chris Corey. Question was asked, what actions should Lee County and Benita Springs take now that would be helpful to protect our citizens? Is the governor's listing of essential services and activities restrictive enough? Well, citizens should continue to follow the social distancing guidelines of maintaining approximately 6 feet from others, and they should also be following the governor's stay-at-home order. Everyone should be practicing good hygiene, avoiding crowds of 10 or more. They should utilize online purchasing and delivery services as much as possible. And if they go out to the grocery store or to any other retailer, then they should be using, when available, the tap-and-pay service during checkout for the in-store visits. What, I do have a lot of websites that I can forward over in an email. That way, you can, you know, refer back to those and maybe get more information from those websites that are very useful from the CDC that give guidance on goods and services as well as workplace, home and home guidance. Another question from Councilman Chris Corey was, should we be more restrictive? For example, should limits be placed on the number of people entering grocery stores, pharmacies, post offices, et cetera? Right now, what we're seeing, that many retailers have already established single points of entry and ingress, and they've limited the number of people allowed inside. You know, retailers are encouraged, of course, to follow the social distancing guidelines for their employees and their customers. So we're seeing this happen, and hopefully it will continue. Next question was, is our food supply safe? Is washing, perishables necessary? How should people bring groceries into the house safely? How should we deal with mail? And is our water supply safe? Now, those questions, actually, they would belong to a lot of different agencies. I did take delivery, looked up the USDA website and tried to get as much information as I could. Anything with the water supply, I would defer that over to the local water municipality. But the CDC has good information as well as the USDA. And some of that is that, according to the USDA website, they are not aware of any reports at this time of human illness that suggest that COVID-19 can be transmitted by food or food packaging. However, it is always important to follow good hygiene practices, shared just a few minutes ago. For example, washing your hands and surfaces often, separating wild meat from other foods, cooking food to the right temperature, refrigerating foods promptly. There's also no evidence to support transmission of COVID-19 associated with imported goods, and there are no reported cases of COVID-19 here in the U.S. associated with imported goods. The virus has not been detected in drinking water. Now, conventional water treatment methods that use filtration and disinfections, such as those in most municipal drinking water systems, should remove or inactivate the virus that causes COVID-19. And as I mentioned, local water municipalities can provide additional information as to what their process is to ensure that drinking water is safe. Now, from, questions from Councilwoman Laura Carr. The question I am able to answer is that regarding of the flu. You asked specifically how many deaths, how many infected, how many hospitalized who the state of Florida ends up with Florida? The Florida Department of Health's role in that is individual cases of seasonal influenza and influenza-related deaths in adults are not required to be reported to the health departments by medical professionals. Therefore, we cannot provide specific numbers for our community. Only influenza-associated pediatric mortalities in children less than 18 years old are required to be reported to the Florida Department of Health. The state does however monitor pneumonia and influenza deaths for all counties from the eurovital statistics. The most recent statewide data on influenza and respiratory illnesses can be found in the weekly report, and it's updated every Wednesday. And it is a form-reported Department of Health website, and if you type into the search, "influenza," you'll see the surveillance report there, and I'll also send a link and follow-up email. The influenza report shows our current flu season in comparison to the previous season average. And that would conclude the questions that pertain to the Department of Health.
Great. Thank you very much for that information. Members of council, are there other additional questions? Fred? You gotta unmute, Fred.
Mayor, what we had advised the Department of Health and Lee Health, that should we have some additional questions? We can forward them to them after this meeting, and we can also post any answers as well on our website.
But we don't have any information on the percentage of folks that are released from the hospital due to C-19?
The questions that I answered are those that pertain to the Department of Health. Most of the other questions would pertain, would be questions that Lee Health would be able to answer for you.
Thank you very much.
Definitely, please, I do appreciate the opportunity. If you have any other questions, I send them to Laura, and she will forward them to me, and I will do, get the responses to as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much. Fred? Thank you very much.
I can't believe she wouldn't know. How many deaths have we had out of Benita Springs?
The deaths right now are not listed by city. They are listed as a whole for Lee County.
Really?
Yes, sir. Now, if you look on the Florida dashboard for the COVID cases, there's an option here to look by zip code. There's a tab at the bottom, and you can search by zip code, Pickly County, and then search the zip codes. I remember, I've looked at it a couple of times. I don't recall that it listed any deaths there. So at this time, the deaths are not being, the information's not being provided by zip code or city, just counties.
Thank you.
Or there are no deaths in Benita Springs yet. Could also be.
There are 3, at least 2, and there may be a third.
Do you know the specifics, Fred?
I know this, the 2 deaths that we had were travel-related, most likely, because they came back from hotspots, and they weren't, they're not, the 2 are not associated with one another. In other words, from 2 different houses, probably, or at least 2,000 yards apart. They don't socialize.
And fit young, healthy, all that? Because I know the age and health of the people that have died?
They were travel-related. They both had some health issues. One, I think, was a chain smoker, and that one had some other respiratory issues.
Do you know the ages?
I think we need, I think the citizens of Benita Springs deserve to know how, what, how we're doing on the deaths, we're getting the cases, but we ought to get together somewhere.
And we all ought to get, but I want to know the recovery rate, because I've heard that over 90% of the people recover. Is that true?
You're asking me, or?
You would say, send me any questions you have after the meeting. I'm sure there's going to be more questions. And please, whatever other questions you have, send them to me, give them to Laura, she'll forward them to me by email, and I will get the best information that's available for you.
Okay, so you're with the Public Information Office, correct? And you guys don't, and you don't know the recovery rate?
There is certain information that is still being protected, and the best, the best way to handle any question that you have is to submit it.
It's a send, sorry. Okay, thank you, Tammy. Very much, your time. Appreciate it. Tammy, we appreciate it.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye, Tammy.
Thank you, Terry.
And again, we'll post, what we will do is we'll forward the questions and repost any responses so the public is aware of it as well. At this time, we'd like to ask Lee Health's Chief Patient Care Officer to join us in an update.
Good afternoon. This is Lisa Scarlatti. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today. I am the Chief Patient Care Officer at Lee Health. I'm also the Incident Command for the pandemic that we're, for the whole system. So, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to start off with just some statistics from Lee Health that might answer some of your questions. We currently have 69 COVID-19 patients isolated within our hospitals. The C D is about 56%. And that is what we call PUI, and that they are persons under investigation. So that means they are symptomatic. However, they either are waiting for a test, most likely pending, or they're waiting for the results of the test, which has, the span of that has been different since the beginning up to today, where we started our rapid testing process, which is actually the same-day turnaround. So, well, we will see a little, we will see less and less of those given that rapid testing. 7.9% of our census are COVID-19 positive. Totally, we have submitted 4,893 specimens for testing, test, excuse me. And we currently have 17 patients under investigation. We have 193 employees that are quarantined at home. 19 employees have tested positive for COVID-19 after being exposed at work. There have been 13 deaths within our hospital system, 14 total in the county is what we were, what we have counted. And then, just a couple outside of this is yesterday, our mobile collection sites, one in Page Field and one in Cape Coral, collected a total of 233 specimens. And we had a total of 560 telemedicine visits between Lee Telehealth and MyChart Video. I do have the list of questions as well, and I probably will answer the most of them. I'm going to start with the ones from Councilwoman Amy Corumba, and I hope I pronounced your name correctly. So, the first was, the percentage of testing positive in the state has been reported as 12%. What is the trend for Southwest Florida? And is this the level that causes concern? We are roughly around 12%. Actually, today, we were at 11.7% that had tested, been tested for positive for COVID-19. However, a positive result is a cause for concern, but not a panic. You can be asymptomatic with COVID-19 and be tested positive, and you could actually be test positive and have mild symptoms. And our, the CDC rates are about 80% that are, have full recovery. So, Councilwoman Laura, I hope that does address some of that concern that you have. Overall, we want to achieve the best result for every patient, so we treat on symptoms and do not wait for the test to come back. So that's, just so you know that. Could you review, again, these are all Councilwoman Corumbas. Could you review the supplies on hand for the region and also those in the pipeline? Is Lee Health drawing from strategic national stockpile? Are you comfortable with the inventory? So, we definitely have the supplies that we need to provide safety for both our patients and our employees to date. We constantly monitor these on a daily basis. We actually do pull from what we call our mission requests from the state and federal stockpile. We also use external vendors as well as our own, within Leesar as well. We continually monitor, especially masks and gowns and gloves and any of the personal protection equipment specific for COVID-19. Are there any plans for discussion about developing auxiliary beds, hospitals such as field hospitals, hospitals standalone surgeries, or conversions of empty buildings? So, we are required to provide a surge protocol. What we look for is additional beds and additional occupancy for specifically ICU patients and ventilated patients related to COVID-19. We have the ability to handle the majority of our surge within our hospital system, partly because of the addition of those 260 beds at Gulf Coast that are fully equipped and are able to handle any patients that we would need to take care of. But we also work with the county on any opportunities to look at alternative care sites and any opportunity that we may need going forward outside of our surge capability. So we continually, continually look to do that. At this point in time, our surge, though, is within our facility and in the footprint of all of our facilities. The next question is, what regional cooperative agreements do we have with other hospital systems? And should we become overwhelmed? We are working hand-in-hand with NCH. You may have seen that there has been a collaboration with them on fundraising as well. We just, I just left the meeting now to talk about what our surge capacities are, to be able to share that amongst NCH and ourselves. And we offer the same to physicians regional. And to make sure that if there is the need, we do use, I just forgot the name of it. I apologize. It'll come to me. But we do have the ability to work together. Should they need something, or should we need something? Mutual aid, that we provide mutual aid for both of those. So that's for that. I'm going to move on to the next question from Councilman Chris Corey. Where do you think Lee County and Benita Springs are on the COVID-19 curve? As it changes every day, and it's based off of social distancing, you know, 2 and 1/2 weeks ago, we probably said it was 2 and 1/2 weeks away, but then we implemented the stay-at-home executive order from the governor and Lee County. Given that, we, what we see is a flattening of the curve and an elongation of the time period, which is what we're looking for, because that decreases the severity and the number of cases and doesn't overwhelm our hospitals. So, at this point in today, if I look at a grid that we keep and we monitor that's based off of a time model from University of Penn Hospital, we're looking at April 21st for us to eat, and we are preparing for that surge, that thesis that we just spoke to. That could change if there are anything else that changes. If the stay-at-home continues to work, that could be pushed out even longer, which is exactly what we're looking for, to not have the surge of patients come to all the hospitals, but rather have them over a longer period of time. Change to the next page. Do medical facilities have sufficient medical supplies? KPE and blood, I think I spoke to the supplies and the personal protective equipment. There's a national shortage for blood, and we have had multiple blood banks, and the blood mobile has been out. We have been able to collect over 150 units of blood, which is great. We could always use more, so if there's an opportunity. The CDC has opened up some of the requirements so that there's no fear that you have to worry about anything, any contamination or anything like that. And we would love to have more people donate. So if there's interest, please let us know, and we would be able to provide either a blood mobile or other services as needed. How can we help medical personnel through because of elimination of elective surgeries and procedures? So we continue to focus our efforts on flexible staffing. And what, one of the things that we have put into place probably 3 weeks ago is what we call a redeployment center. So if we consolidate services or if there's people who want to work from home or people who are furloughed because of the low volume in surgery. We have not really furloughed anybody. We put them in the redeployment center and then we actually cross train them or offer them another job within the system. That helps us from a staffing perspective across all of our aspects, whether it be in one of our specimen collection sites or whether it be in the hospital or one of our other offices that remain open. So we are hoping that we continue to do that. We have placed over 184 different people who, whose jobs were changed and are still working within the system. And we have not had, to date, no one has been light off. So that is our intent to maintain that. As more tests become available, will test locations expand into physicians' offices? And will residents be able to be tested on request? As of the, as of yesterday, with the new rapid testing process, you still need a memo from your physician, but you have the ability to be tested. Within Lee Health, we are working on a flow process and protocol that we will use for our testing site, but you still have that ability now to ask for a prescription for testing for the COVID-19. I believe that we'll see the CDC relaxes some of those requirements. It's not officially yet, but if you remember, they were asking if you had a fever, sore throat, runny nose, if you had come in contact with anybody that was COVID-19 positive or if you had done any international travel. So I think we will see that that's going to be relaxed and then you will have the ability to be tested by just having a prescription from your physician. More to come on that. We follow the CDC.
Do the tests show antibodies yet or no? Antibodies or no?
They do not. There is one testing kit that is available for antibody therapy. It is, if I remember correctly, it's either in Washington or New York, or maybe both. However, the validity and the reliability of the test is under, is still being evaluated. And we're hoping that this will help us as we move forward. They use it for herd immunity. So if we know that there's a 60% or greater positive in an antibody within a local region, they consider that herd immunity and that they can start to relax some of those quarantine requirements that have been put into place. But currently, we don't have that locally. And I believe that's all the questions that I did have. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, or you can send them to me as well.
Oh, Lisa, thank you very much. Monday, I went online and American Red Cross and put in my zip code for blood, you know, to go donate blood, and there were none in the area.
They did actually ask us to hold on to that. So they American Red Cross is separate from ours, so we, they have their own. So if that's what it is, we'd likely would be happy to help with that.
No, okay. So just contact what, the Lee?
If you're really helped out here, we have a, we have a blood bank. I will make sure you get the contact information on the door, link for that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
They helped you.
Thank you.
Other members of council that have questions?
Yes, I have a question. Do you see the stay at home order being extended through the end of May?
Yeah, I guess that's a good question. I think if we don't see a change in the numbers or if we see an increase in the numbers, my assumption is, and what we would recommend is that we extend that because it is, it's highly correlated that that distance, that social distancing is the key to keeping this contained.
So Lisa, I mean, the other way to look at it is if you wash your hands thoroughly and keep the surfaces clean, we could do a slow opening and develop slowly the herd immunity. Dog parks could be open, parks could be open. I even, you know, a soft opening for restaurants. Because, you know, we don't know if, if our area is differently affected than, well, we do know it's differently affected than New York City. So New York City is, is having its crisis, but we started our self-quarantine earlier than Manhattan, New York, and other really bad zones. So we, we took the hit already. And for what, 300 people that are infected and minimum 80%, most likely, you know, will recover, can't we just sort of loosen things up so that we don't destroy our whole economy? And it's a choice. If people are still leery, then stay home. And, you know, reach out to your friends or neighbors or however you've been doing it. But if you're comfortable going out, you can go out. And people respect the physical distances and washing of their hands thoroughly and continually.
I very much understand where your coming from and your perception. I have to tell you that though, that I would say that that's not a guarantee. Number one, you're right. You and I would probably not worry about that. And we would distance ourselves and wash our hands. Not everybody feels that way. And unfortunately, that's what we saw. Since this has been put into place, we have seen a little bit of flattening and it takes about 10 days for that to start. There's also once, what we're missing, the pieces that we're missing. If we open up testing, there will be a lot of positive people who have COVID-19 positive. They may have symptoms, they may not even know that, they may be a carrier, but they can and will infect others, which would shoot that number way up and put us back behind where we are today. Personally, and from what I see recommended from the CDC, the longer we can do this and the more we do this, the quicker we will recover without any additional spikes in any of the positive cases. And any of this, I mean, people get very sick when they do get this. And we don't want that to happen. So that's, you know, it's what we need to do best for all of us. But I very much understand we're all getting a little cabin fever. I can understand that.
Well, but it isn't really only cabin fever and the social distancing people are taking as being socially isolated. Not even saying hello anymore. It's the weirdest mentality that is going on. But is it really necessary? Because what you're saying is, we can't prove it not to be true. Our, I believe our constituents and our citizens wash their hands regularly and do keep a pretty good hygiene regimen and have increased it. So I, if we took a try with people who are willing to, the way the guidelines suggest, like we did the, what we established on, it was St. Patrick's Day, March 17th. If we go to those guidelines and see how things evolve, and if not, we shut down immediately. But why not do a slow test? I mean, somebody's got to be brave enough to do a slow test. Those guidelines and see how things evolve, and if not, we shut down immediately. But why not do a slow test? I mean, somebody's got to be brave enough to do a slow test. And again, there's no force. It's encouraged to stay home, work at home. But if a restaurant wants to open and if a person wants to visit it, they can go.
So I can tell you that we provide information back, including all of the tests with the Department of Health, back to the county commissioners and the state as well, that they're the ones who would make that decision, given the information that we provide.
Right. Well, it's pretty sad that everyone keeps kicking the ball. Lee goes to Collier, Collier goes to Lee. I mean, somebody has to be brave enough to say enough. We've done everything we can and we're going to destroy our society. And when there's nothing on the shelves and nobody working, it's going to hurt our health as well. So we need to think that through. Everybody right now is going to public, Fresh Market, Del Romo's in our area, right? So I'm there, I'm, what if I'm asymptomatic? Cats are now contagious. Are we going to forbid the sale of cats? Are we going to round up the cats? Any cat outside, should we cat pure and hold? I mean, where are we, where we're just keep going and going with this? And, you know, cardboard, it can live on cardboard, so wash everything that comes in. You know, there is something to being exposed to germs that your body builds up a resistance. The herd mentality, the herd immunization that you were talking about. But that can't happen if you don't let people herd.
And I think that FDA testing, once they get them out and rolling for that, the antibody, as you mentioned, would be a help with that.
Yeah, but this weekend, one of the testing spots, I think it was in Charlotte, closed down because they had no appointment.
But that was for a different testing. And I did hear that. I'm talking about the, for the herd, when we talked about that antibody testing, that's different than the regular testing.
Can I ask a question? Or are you done? You stated earlier that the April 21st was the date that you were seeing the peak. You were projecting, or somebody was projecting the peak in terms of the deaths, or death rates. I distributed earlier today through our lean, a report by a health metric company voted by the White House often, that projects the death rate out through August 1st. While we've had 309 deaths, I think the number is, in Florida to date, the final death of it by this health metric is somewhere around 6,900, which is about twice what the current death count is in New York City. The assumptions in that projection were that the schools remain closed, that the nonessential businesses stay enclosed, and that all states, including the eight or nine that haven't done it yet, issued stay at home orders. That's how you get to that, that's what's necessary to get to that number. Massachusetts is an exception. They haven't issued stay at home. Their projected death rate is, assuming that they did it within a week, would be like 8,900. So I think this thing has got a, yeah, it's got a, it's got a peak, but there's going to be a long tail on this thing out to August 1st. And it's going to be a curve that gently flattens. It's not going to be a beaching curve. So I'm just concerned that we continue to exercise patience and we do those things necessary to try to mitigate the death count. I'm personally not going to be very happy with 6,900 death cases in Florida. I think that some of that's going to occur in Southwest Florida. So I would encourage Lee Health to, to help us stay patient and maintain the course.
Okay. Thank you. I absolutely agree. Thank you very much.
Other members of council?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the models, I mean, I'm upset and sad that almost 400 people have died in, in the state of Florida. And the models that predict nearly 7,000 are going to die have already been refigured and changing premises and so forth. But again, by predicting the doomsday, everybody stays home, so stay home. But I think that if we opened up a few places, we might see that it isn't as contagious, it isn't as devastating as being predicted. At minimum, we could open up the parks. Fresh air is good for, I mean, viruses, colds don't like, you know, heat. They love germs. They don't like sunshine. I mean, typically, fresh air is good thing. So can we at least open up the parks, the dog parks? And people obey the six foot, you know, physical distance and so forth? And see if we can do that. Our citizens, I know there was an issue with Marco, but it's different, it's a different situation here. Now, I'm not saying that, because they, they did a very small opening. If we just opened the parks, there wouldn't be this rush of people to one place that then by definition would cancel the event. So that's, at least that's something we could consider possibly, or no?
Well, my view of it is, is that we listen to medical professionals and people that have to deal with the pandemic and do the treatment of the patients and follow their lead in terms of how we respond to this. This is one of the reasons that I wanted to, wanted to have these weekly meetings so that we can listen to what the professionals are telling us and so that we understood that we're, I think we're in the early stages of this disease. It's, it's still several days until we get to the 21st. I think we're going to be shocked when we get there. I think we're going to be shocked with the death rates over the next two or three weeks. So I don't see any reason why we would have a debate over reopening things till it will allow you to the top of the curve. So that's plenty.
Thank you, Chris. Fred?
A simple question. I think you said there were 13 people treated at Lee that by, in Lee County and one that didn't. And one, in the two cases I cited, people died in Collier County. So we're not, we've lost a statistic someplace. So I'm going to get you the information through Laura so you can check that out if you would.
I would definitely do that. Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important that the stats are, it's understandable that in the situation we're in, that they, from here to there occasionally will not be 100% that's important to try and mitigate.
Definitely. You know, one of the things that we learned is that if the death occurs in their, in their residency state is not the state of Florida, that we may count it, but someone else, but it doesn't get counted for Lee. Lee County will count it, but Lee Health doesn't count it. So it's all how, it's all how they count. But thank you. Please let me know. I would, we're glad to be followed up on that.
Yeah, and thank you very much for your presentations, for informing everyone. We need more of this, I think, to inform the residents or citizens.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Counselor, are there's other questions? Amy, did you have?
No, I just, no, actually, I'm fine. I do think that it would be good to get an update on contact tracing. That I think, I think the zip code on the reporting is excellent because you can figure out sort of locationally where people are. But even in our community where we're living now, we, I, we think we have five cases within, where we live. We even know the buildings where they are, but we don't know, and I know there's HIPAA restrictions there. We don't know the people unless they happen to say, I'm the person that tested positive. It's very difficult for people in that situation to feel comfortable because we don't want to ostracize people who are sick. But we would like to know, well, did I talk to this person? Was I somewhere with this person? Did I see him on the street? And I think that the contact tracing has to, information has to be improved. And it's helpful to us that we know where they are, the buildings that they are in the community, because we are, we all have to take responsibility for our own health. And there is a whole philosophical discussion that we can have about whether it's appropriate to shut down an economy and for how long because there are people that are hurt by this, that will be hurt by this almost for their entire life because of their effect on the careers. And there are, there are secondary effects that I think we cannot ignore. But I don't believe the city council is the entity, that we could discuss it. We want to get information out to our people. We could encourage them to do social distancing. But to debate whether a model is working or not, I just don't think we're capable of doing because we don't have the ability to do it. Do have to rely on the professionals. But I do agree that the professionals have to understand because they look at it very narrowly. They look at it, can a hospital take care of this? And they try to project, project what the incidence of health. And I don't think they're capable of doing that. And that's why the models are changing daily. And we are basing a lot of our decisions on models that are proving to be not as accurate as we could hope. And the answer to that is they say, well, we're doing what we're supposed to do, so we're bending the curve. That may or may not be the case, but it's convenient that it's going in the right direction. I am troubled by the elogation of the curve because that suggests that the social distances and the foreclosure of, quote, of nonessential businesses will last a long time beyond the end of the month. There are a lot of people that are going to be hurt. And it's not just the stock market. It's people's lives are being affected. I don't know if anybody had been in a situation where their community was affected by layoffs, but I was with United Technologies, which most of you don't even remember, where it was the first time that white collar workers were furloughed. It was unbelievable what that did to families. So I think we can talk about these things, but I don't think it's appropriate for the city council because we don't, it's not within our power to do that or to even evaluate it. I think we should encourage everybody to be as diligent as they can, social distancing, sanitation. But I really think I would like to know, if there's a case with somebody, I want to know who they are, not because I'm going to put, you know, a big C on their door or anything like that. But if I had something to do with them, I would be more aware of my own body. So I don't know if you could do anything about it because I know you're restricted by the HIPAA actions because that's what's happening in our community.
So there would be a question for DOH, honestly? We would just look for DOH, so.
Right.
Well, actually, in Alabama and Georgia, Alabama or Georgia, Louisiana, and maybe it's Georgia, they're releasing the names of people who are tested to police and emergency responders. So they're not listening.
It's not legal, I don't believe.
It's not, even, I don't even think to that extent.
It's a federal law.
I agree with you 100%. It's a little scary that that's what they're doing, but not us, so that's okay. But it is true that we don't know a lot about this, this virus, this cold that is so highly contagious and, and rough on the respiratory system. To close the state of Florida for 390 deaths and in our area, only 400 people are positive. And the first death in Collier County was a 94-year-old man who was told several months earlier that he had only months to live. But that's a little bit of a problem with the statistics in that we don't know any other factors that are added in to why people, why these 390 people have died. But I do know that one person in Collier County was 94 years old with serious cancer throughout his body. But so, dog parks and parks in general, we're not going to open. I'd like that answered. I would like to vote on it. Would anybody support opening the dog parks and the parks up? At minimum, that's what we do.
Councilwoman Carr, this is a workshop, so.
Councilwoman Carr, this is a workshop, so unfortunately, we can't take any action items.
Okay, but the governor said that the city leaders, the city elected, you know, and city managers and so forth, could, at their own, their own community, make their own judgment calls. He encouraged that each city, each area, and I know it's Lee County, but.
Are you saying, Derek, that we should hold back till next Wednesday?
Hold back till next Wednesday? And what Councilwoman Carr is referring to is, the same day that the executive order came out, which was basically the stay-at-home order statewide, which was executive order of 2091. Later that day, executive order of 2092 came out, which said that local governments can be more restrictive than the state order, but it cannot be less restrictive. So we can't, basically, what we can't do is, we can't decide that there are other essential businesses that can open them up.
Well, the governor was a little wishy-washy on that, so thank you for clearing that up, Derek. Sorry, wasted time. Next Wednesday, though.
Okay, so Lori, I would just suggest, Councilwoman, that just have, have that green sheeted and we can discuss it then.
Thank you. Lot more information, too, so that'll be great. And Lisa was very, very helpful, so thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Other members of council with questions, or comments? Mr. Mayor? Yes, Jesse? And then Fred, I think I saw Fred, but Jesse and then Fred.
I guess, I was kind of curious with what we just did with Laura's last thing there. My understanding, based on how it's written, is that we don't have the ability, as a city, to relax the restrictions. Did I misunderstand or misread that? And then additionally, have we ever had any, anything else on what happened at Benita Bay? Is there any word on that from anybody, Chris or the mayor?
I'll address that if you want me to at this time. They just put, they just put out a notice just before the meeting started. The family put out a notice that the 39-year-old that died during their autopsy, they tested for COVID-19, he had no COVID-19 virus detected in his body. So, and apparently, what unfortunately happened was he just died of a cardiac arrest.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
The club just announced that.
Thank you. Thank you. Fred?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that even though the parks are closed, and for sure the dog park is, that if somebody is walking, they can walk in a park. Not the dog park, but the other parks we have, as long as they're not in a group of people, they can walk, you know, and that's not a problem. That, I think that is a policy that we've, that the city's working on. If a secret tree, people walking together, they're going to bust you. If one person is out walking, and we happen to get into the park, walk them through, they're not going to get busted.
Correct. If, if the facilities have a gate, the gates are locked and noticed. If it is an open facility, it's noticed. But we do have maintenance employees who are doing their regular duties. They are providing a gentle reminder that the park is closed. But if you're just walking and you're practicing such social distancing, neither our staff nor the sheriff's office is removing anyone from the park in any way. But we are asking just as a general reminder that they practice the social distancing, we have those notices up, and that we remind them that the park is closed. But as of right now, also, our canoe and kayak launch is open, too, and people are adhering to the social distancing there.
Arlene, I'll just ducktail on that real quick, because I got some questions at the Benita Bay Marina this morning, because the, and I forget the number of the act, but legally as written, the marinas should be closed. However, not being enforced, with the exception of possibly Miami-Dade, but certainly on the west coast of Florida, not being enforced. But what is being forced, back to what so many of us have said today, is the social distancing and the groups of 10, if you do get in a boat and try to huddle and congregate out, out on the water and other things. But, so, it's one of these things where, at the moment, it's kind of, legally as written, it cannot happen. So that certainly puts marinas in a tough spot to try to interpret the current order. And Derek, could I ask you to chime in for a minute on that? And then Jesse, I know you had something.
For the record, we are not advising anyone to go to any closed businesses that are, that are restricted. The issue really is of resource management, and the mayor, I did speak with the sheriff earlier today. The focus of law enforcement today is to focus on breaking up the congregations of people. That's, that's the primary focus they, they are, you know, as, as many of us are probably were inundated with questions about specific businesses being open, specific types of operations, what are some of those issues? The Florida Department of Work Management has put out an updated list, all of the, I think, it's going to be available on our website as well, and it's at, the state website is florida-disaster.org. Right at the top of the page, it has a list of all the businesses that are being essential, and it's broken down by category, so it's a lot easier to read than trying to piece together the governor's order plus all the items that were attached to it. But at this time, folks, the law enforcement is breaking up those, those potentials for congregations. So, you know, you may see a business operating, they're basically not going in and saying, okay, if someone owns a hair salon, and that hair salon is staffed by the owner who is, you know, doing paperwork or remodeling, they're not going in there and busting them. But if that salon is fully stacked up with hairdressers and there's customers in each seat, then that is the kind of case that they don't, that they're prioritizing at the spot.
Thank you, Derek. Jesse? You're okay? Chris, did you have something? No, okay. Fred? Sorry, Fred, hit your mute, unmute button.
What is unmuted? Unmuted?
Okay, there you go. Now, Fred, Fred, we can't hear you, Fred.
Fred, on my computer, mute is when the red light's on.
It says mute.
There you go, Fred, go ahead, we can hear you now.
Now, he was asked a question, can you define what is a necessary activity versus a unnecessary? And he gave a pretty good definition. He said, if I want to go out and run five miles, I'll define that as a necessary activity. But if I get in a block, a race around the block with five or 10 people, that's unnecessary. Because you got a group of people. So what I, what I got out of that, if you did, do anything by yourself and not use other people to help you do it, that's, that could be a necessary activity, because that allows you to boil off steam, get out of the cabin fever and all that. So I think, I think his definition is probably pretty good. That's probably why some of us go for walks, I do.
Actually, Fred, you can go up to 10 people. So you could, two people can go for a walk, three people can go, I mean, if you're living in the same house and you all go for a walk together, that's okay, as long as it's not greater than 10, and that you have space between you. I know, there are very few cars in my neighborhood, so people could do that, but I haven't seen it. But just clarifying.
Thanks, Laura.
Welcome.
Other members of council, are there, are anybody at this point with a question? Okay, no questions. Arlene, where would you like to go from here?
Yes, at this point, if there's a follow-up question, we're happy to forward them to Lisa. And again, Lisa, thank you for participating today, we appreciate it.
It's been my pleasure, and please do. Thank you very much.
Now, Lisa, thank you very much. And I wanted to add, on Friday, for the good of the order, if anybody, I'm going to be participating in a conference call of mayors with the United States Conference of Mayors, and it's going to be with Dr. Deborah Burks. And she is obviously the physician right now that the president has put in as the head of the coronavirus response coordinator. So that's going to be this Friday. So if anybody on council or anybody on our team has some questions, please just, Arlene, I guess, email, email them to Arlene. Then I, we won't get into any issues, how's that? Great. Once again, thank you so much to everybody at Lee Health, keep up the great work. I know you're all tired and working hard, but you're doing a great job. And it's uncharted waters, uncharted territory for all of us, so thank you for everything you're doing.
It's a pleasure. You know, we aim to take care of our patients, that's our mission, that's what we focus on, so, and care for the community. So thank you for all your support.
Wonderful, thanks so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Arlene?
Yes, thank you. At this time, at the last city council meeting, there was a request for us to provide some additional information on what the city staff is doing in conjunction with the council for outreach and communications, as well as compliance. So I've asked our manager of Neighborhood Services, Tony Backhurst, if he could go first, and please give us an update on the joint operations he's been doing on compliance with the Lee County Sheriff's Office, with our educational outreach to the essential businesses, and as well as additional opportunities to educate the public on social distancing.
Great, thanks. Tony?
Good afternoon, good afternoon, mayor and council. Just going to give you a quick update. Obviously, the purview of enforcement for stuff like this is, is the sheriff's department and the DBPR Department of Business and Professional Regulation. So what we've been trying to do is, is work and supplement the efforts with outreach and education. And where we've been doing this is with social distancing. We've been, we have received complaints at our department related to, you know, social distancing and some of the public's concerns. So we've spoken to local businesses, and what we're currently engaged in, and we've made some progress, we've actually laminated the Department of Health guidelines for social distancing in both English and Spanish. And we've gone out, we've started off with the higher-traffic businesses, convenience stores, gas stations, some of the smaller grocery stores, and passing out that information, which has been pretty well received. And we'd also, anybody can contact us with a business at 2399-496-257, if they would like laminated copies of that. It works for sanit, you know, it's easier to sanitize, you don't have to keep putting up after every time you're wiping the doors down. We've also been receiving, you know, the issues with regards to the beach, and we've worked in conjunction with the sheriff's office, and we've done virtually daily patrols on the beach to ensure that everything is going as it should down there. And, and happy to report, we are seeing that people are actually, you know, following all of the guidelines from our observations. And, and the third issue that we've, we've seen issues with is with the stay-at-home order, there's been concerns with people with, I'll say Airbnb, that's just one, one website that does the short-term rental vacations. So with those complaints, you know, if the complainant does have information, we provide them, the DBPR website, you can do an online complaint there. And also, what we're doing is, is contacting the property owner if we do get an address on it, and we're advising them and sending them the copy of the executive governor's executive order 20-87, which is the current prohibition of short-term rental vacations.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody have any questions for Tony? Tony, thank you very much. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, Tony. I also wanted to add to that, as we have been getting regular updates from Lee County Sheriff's Office on their patrol of our parks as well, and we are noticing compliance with social distancing as well. They, any, any of our parks that are accessed by vehicle, they've been driving in or around and giving us updates. And with that, I'd also like to call now on Laura Taylor to give us an update on all of our communications outreach and updates to our social media, as well as some PSAs we've done.
Thank you, Laura. So I'm going to try to do a high-level update, but go back to actual dates of when we did the advisories. So to start, the communications team has been taking daily joint information calls countywide, with public information officers participating from a variety of agencies, including local cities, Lee County Government, Port Authority, Department of Health, Lee Health, and the school board. These have been essential in sharing information with the public and aligning jurisdictions. The first outreach began on March 7th, with sharing Department of Health information on our social media. On March 13th, the first city advisory went out, and that had a reach of about approximately 4,895 people on social media, and it was eblasted to approximately 30,000 email addresses. The advisory discussed Benita Springs taking proactive steps to help prevent potential exposure of COVID-19. This included information about revoking special event permits, postponing non-essential meetings, posting COVID-19 resource information at city facilities, and aligning efforts at jurisdictions. We also worked with individual event organizers to be sure that they were comfortable with the process for postponing or canceling events. We helped them with their refunds for event permit fees at that time as well. Advisory two went out March 16th, and that had a reach to about 3,645 people on Facebook, as well as our 30,000 eblasts. We talked in that advisory about suspension of programs, and Lee's play, rental inspections, and providing information about the upcoming special meeting and press conference that city council was to hold. We also shared Department of Health information. On March 17th, the city livestreamed a special meeting and had the press conference with Mayor Peter Simmons, Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue Chief Greg DeWitt, and Lieutenant Jim Bogley O'Leary from the Lee County Sheriff's Office. They gave the information to the public that the city council had declared state of emergency, and at that time, there were 160 cases in the state, with four positive cases in Lee County. On March 17th, that same day, at the press conference, we did issue advisory three, and that had additional closures of parks. On March 19th, we issued advisory five, and that talked about community development, suspending all inspections on the interior of occupied buildings for 30 days, enclosures of the city beach parks. On March 13th, we also started to work on transitional plans for our staff to be able to telecommute where available. On March 20th, we issued advisory six, and that would be the issue of no-contact operations that we issued for city hall and city facilities. On March 25th, the mayor and I worked with NBC to do, the mayor did an interview, and he did that through FaceTime. On March 27th, staff produced a public service announcement with Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District Chief Greg DeWitt. He had about 3,122 reviews on Facebook and about 1,020 views on YouTube. The very next day, staff produced a video with the mayor, informing residents about economic resources, new store hours, and encouraging residents to stay home. The mayor's video had about 1,000 views, and he had a reach of 2,310, with 953 engagements. April 1st, the city showed the governor's safe-at-home order through eBlast, Benita TV, social media. Staff worked to produce the city's first virtual city council meeting. We also had, on March 24th, the city created a dedicated webpage for COVID-19 information. The page gave information about what to do if you thought you were exposed from the Department of Health. There was also information, or is also information, about economic assistance programs for individuals and businesses. You will find city of Benita Springs advisories and what steps the city is taking. Social media feeds for the Center for Disease Control and Lee Department of Health are also available on this page. Links to the governor's website, Department of Health website, the Lee County Government website, Lee County Economic Development website, Lee Health Telemedicine, and more. We continue to update this page daily. We are sharing daily information on the city's social media sites, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, as well as posting information on Benita Television. On March 18th, we also issued an advisory from BSU, informing residents that they had activated their emergency response plan and that drinking water supplies remain safe. We also shared information from the Nada Assistance Office. And now, let me get off to you first. Okay, so April 1st, the city showed the governor's sacred home, I told you that. And the staff worked to produce the city's first virtual city council meeting. On April 2nd, the staff- On April 2nd, the staff worked with the mayor to release a letter from him encouraging residents to stay home and, again, share more economic resource information for businesses and individuals. We've answered questions from Lee News, NBC Tube, Benita Banner. This morning, we eBlasted state of political COVID response updates. And as you know, today, as council has directed, we will be asking guest speakers that are relevant to COVID-19 response to provide updates during their virtual meetings. We will continue in our efforts to educate the public and take all precaution to protect the public health and safety of our community.
Great, thank you, Laura. Other questions for Laura? Thank you very much, very comprehensive. Arlene?
Thank you, Laura. What I wanted to add is, as Laura mentioned, we are in preparations, of course, for our April 15 city council meeting at 9:00 a.m., and that will be a regular meeting of council where actual items can be taken. In keeping with Derek's recommendation, we're moving forward with items that would not cause issues as much with public comment. We are also prepping for an April 26 meeting as well, a 22nd meeting, April 22nd meeting, Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. What we'd like to do at that meeting, that would be a continuing workshop meeting, is to invite a representative from the Benita Springs Economic or South Lee Economic Development Council to participate and maybe give some guidance to local businesses. And also, in short, we'd also like to invite some of our local social service organizations to participate, to share with us what needs there in the community and what response for services that they're receiving. And that's our plans for the April 22nd meeting as well.
Okay, thank you, Arlene. And I'll just add, Jessie had asked a question earlier, Chris, Chris had addressed it, I just was sitting here, and I got the email that Chris was referring to regarding the Benita Bay resident, and I'll just read it because it's not very long. It says, "The following was communicated today from the Benita Bay Club Board of Directors to its membership," and then this is the quote, "Last Friday, we shared some unfortunate news regarding the son of one of our members. The family informed us today that their son tested negative," just like Chris had said, "for COVID-19. Please keep the family in your collective thoughts and prayers during their time of loss." And that was sent out by the Benita Bay Community Association Board of Directors. So I just wanted to share that. So you've heard it verbatim. Arlene, do we have any other items for today, or?
The only other item, I just want to make sure everyone was aware, is that we had originally stopped the special event permits through April 13th. I have confirmed with Laura that the other events that were scheduled into April, the groups have voluntarily postponed or canceled their event through the end of April. So we're going to continue through the end of April regarding the postponed events, and should something lift sooner, we'll, of course, bring that sooner.
Right, right. And given that next week will be a meeting, if we could structure, I'd like to, I'd like to hear, because you're obviously talking about next Wednesday, Arlene, for the economic impact or some information.
We were planning the workshop updates for April 22nd, Wednesday.
Okay, so that would be, I guess what I'm getting at is, with Councilwoman Carr's earlier comment about parks and some of these other things, I would like to, if we could somehow get some economic, and restaurants, and I know you had mentioned that, Laura, as well, and a soft opening in the life, but if that's, if there's not a way to get that information, I'd like to, if we could, Arlene, track down, and I know it's early and everything's fluid and everything's changing, but some kind of an economic report next week for our regular meeting as well, such that it is, it may be incomplete, it may be, you know, may have a lot of holes in it, but some kind of economic information as well as maybe some updated health numbers as well, the best that we have at, knowing that unfortunately, nothing's going to be perfect.
Mr. Mayor, could I also add that it would be beneficial if we could hear, keep your ears open, if any municipalities are doing something like this, let us know. And let us know what they did, if they're comparable communities to ours, population-wise and all associated, and all that stuff. But if there are municipalities who are loosening it and have found the dead legal ability to do that, I would love to hear about that.
No, that's a good point, Jessie, and I would, back to what I had said earlier, if anybody, I've been doing, along with the mayors of Lee County and Commissioner Brian Hammond and Senator Lizbeth Benacrista, we've been doing daily calls, weekends included, you've heard me mention this. So if anybody has any questions that they want, in fact, and I had one today, that was very beneficial, if anybody has any questions that they want me to float around the county on these daily calls, please send those to Arlene as well. So, and anybody, kind of last call for anybody?
I'd like to hear what's going on with the Marco Beaches, too, so if you talk to them, let us know.
The Marco Beaches are not going to reopen.
They are, or they are not?
They are not.
Okay, so that's different than what we were hearing on the news yesterday.
They opened briefly.
They opened briefly, but then closed, okay.
I would like to hear from Derek on some of the comments that we may hear, because I don't believe that it's in our power to relax these things. So could we have just our attorney tell us about that?
My recommendation at this point is, you are not authorized to contravene anything with respect to the emergency orders of the government. You can tighten them, you cannot release them. Now, there are, there are not any significant restrictions placed on park or park facilities. The issue is whether or not those park facilities are likely to encourage, you know, groups. So a good example would be if you had a wide-open regional park and it had a playground. Well, that playground would be a facility that would be used, it would be hard to be taken control of it, even if there were never 10 people at it at any given time, there could be hundreds of people over the course of the day. So we would have to look at all the parks on an individualized basis. My recommendation would be, if we're going to consider that, we go ahead and start looking at that because between today and next week, things could change again, so we can get more revision. So I think, I think even the mayor highlighted the humidity, the situation, I think we, you know, we should be looking for the possibility of doing many things that would encourage people to get out that are going to be safe, but we kind of keep those things going on a rolling basis and waiting for advice to come down, like either lifting of restrictions or best practices for allowing to proceed.
And also from Lee County, because Lee County, we would be subject to any restrictions coming out of Lee County also, correct?
They have not issued any separate orders from the, it needs to be the governor's order, to make any more local restrictions than we are. Although, as an operator of many parks, they are placing restrictions on our parks, as the state has done, they closed both state parks, state beaches, and wildland reserves.
The only other point I'd like to make is that Lee County via the Horizon Council has asked us to participate in a public service effort, and that's basically to get everybody on board, and I want to just, you probably saw this, but I'm going to show it to you again. It says, "I took the pledge," and some of you might have already hooked on to their website, and they're asking us to distribute that through our communities. And I personally am doing it in my community, and I am getting a letter out to the District One emails that I have. I have my letter written, but I don't have a, I'm working on the emails, I have to collect some others. And I'm asking people to be responsible, and it's kind of fun to, it's sort of like in the Blue Zones where we're asking people to sign up and do our 10,000 steps, it's a similar thing to that. It's basically, stay home, wash your hands, don't touch your face, and don't go in crowds, which is a very small thing to ask of our citizens. So I'm interested about it, I think it might work, and I hope that others will do the same thing. And you can get it, I think, well, we could probably get, and I think the website is leecove/pledges where you could get that information, but we can put it, I think it's on our website already, or maybe it will be, because I did talk to Arlene about it.
I agree for that, and I know myself, a few of the members of council at least have done that, myself, I know Jessie has done it, I know Arlene did, but I would encourage, if all members of council, all seven of us could do that, Laura and Arlene, I'd like to, if we can get seven pictures of all of us, obviously separate, they're going to have to be separate, but if we could send that out, perhaps, or however we want to get that out, but I'd like to expand upon what Councilwoman Columbus said, and see if, encourage everybody, all seven of us, you know, just to take that pledge, and if we could get that out, you know, I would very much be in favor of that, but that's one person's opinion of seven, so thank you, Amy. Okay, so Amy, I was just going to say, Amy, we cannot hear you, but why don't we kind of serve as, like I normally do at a meeting, we'll kind of go through the districts now for anything else you may have.
I just wanted to thank you for saying that, and I'm in the process of taking my picture and sending it in, and I hope everybody else does, too. I'm done.
Thank you very much, Amy. District Two, Jessie Purdon?
No, good job by everybody, I appreciate the hard work, before we see you guys next week.
Great, thank you very much, Jessie. District Three, Councilwoman Laura Carr.
Yes. I wish everyone a blessed Easter, and God bless all, and, you know, sending out lots of prayers, stay strong, Benita. Love you all.
Thank you very much, Laura. District Four, Councilman Chris Corey.
No, there's really nothing new to report, we've been in contact with a lot of the citizens in District Four, they're all very supportive of the governor and the stay-at-home pledge. I think we have been in contact with Lee County Sheriff's Office, that being Benita Bay. He's reporting that we have something like 98% compliance with the essential businesses rules that the governor set forward. They're focused right now on education, if they're finding non-essential businesses, still trying to work or non-essential workers try to enter Benita Bay, for example, and we're assisting with that, so I think the businesses are doing a good job with the governor's order, so that's what I have to report.
Great, thank you, Chris. District Five, Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson?
Yeah, I really don't have a whole lot to say, I'm still at work, and unfortunately, since I still am working in essential service, I obviously can't take the pleasure to stay home because I have to go to work every day. But yeah, no, everything I've seen, all the customers that have been coming in, they're all practicing social distancing, everybody's been very respectful of that, and, you know, just from what I've seen around the community, I think everybody's doing a great job, and you just owe me to hang in there. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Mike. District Six, Councilman Fred Forbes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, you can hear me, okay. Two things, first of all, in all our meetings, why don't staff arrange for one of our local ministers and go a prayer, we could use more prayers, I think. So that's number one. Number two is, I think that the, most of the people I see are following the safe distance and staying in as much as necessary, when they do go out, occasionally they wear the mask and all that. In fact, in Hunter's Ridge, there are some women that are making masks up and giving them away, so people donate, you know, like old sheets and all that, and make them in masks. They're all pulling together.
Great, thank you, Fred. And I'd like to thank everybody for this workshop, and I go back to Chris, thanks for suggesting these weekly meetings, and it's one of these things where, you know, like I've said to our team, when we had Hurricane Irma, I knew, you know, the only thing I knew how to do was go out in the street and try to help people and bang on doors, so this is obviously a different test for all of us, because it's something that obviously has gripped the nation and the world, and I'm just, my point is, more communication is always better than less communication. I know we're all getting inundated with emails, but when residents of Benita Springs can see us, they can hear from us and hear what we're saying and share the message, I just, there is no replacement for that. So thank you very much, everybody, and God bless, and we will have a regular scheduled meeting on next Wednesday, as normal, and please get any agenda items into Arlene and the team, and I think, Fred, I think that's a good point about seeing if we could line up a clergy, clergy man or woman for the next meeting, and I'll just give everybody double last call, if there's anything else to say, please.
I would like to throw, we must win out there, because he's got the church downtown, and he was the first person to contact us and said he wouldn't do church, so I think he would be a good choice.
No, that's a great idea, and team, if we could reach out, ask to run us win, that would be great. Thank you for that, Jessie. Okay, seeing nothing else, I will motion to adjourn, although we're at a workshop, so. Chris, did you have something? I'm sorry? No, okay, okay, dynamite, everybody, great work, stay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Everybody stay safe and God bless.
Thank you, staff. Bye.
Thanks, everybody, bye-bye.